It's seven o'clock?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll call our meeting to order. Please stand. Stand by. Who started?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence, please. Thank you. We're all called.
Chairman Quackebush.
Present.
Legislator Devon.
Present.
Legislator White.
Present.
Legislator Beaneak.
Here.
Legislator Puchessi.
Here.
Legislator Wheeler.
Here.
Legislator Isabelle.
Here.
Legislator Kuchus.
Here.
Legislator Kelly.
Present.
Okay, privilege of the floor. We have a proclamation. County Exec, would you please come up and take care of the proclamation?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. As we all know, this upcoming month is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I've had the privilege of attending the ceremony, which is going to be tomorrow, for a number of years now, and obviously, it's a very important day for awareness, and make sure everyone wears their purple tomorrow. But Ginger, if you could come up, I would love to present you with this proclamation. So on behalf of the county legislature and the Executive's Office, presenting you this proclamation, I'm going to read it. Whereas the strength of the state and our nation is derived from the greatness of its citizenry and its right to recognize, honor, and applaud the accomplishment of those citizens who commit to serving the needs of others, and whereas Montgomery County is making known their zero tolerance standard domestic violence during Domestic Violence Awareness Month, whereas Zero Tolerance Program provides a unique opportunity to Montgomery County to join forces with Catholic Charities, the DA's office, and the police community, whereas the Montgomery County Task Force Against Domestic Violence plays a vital role in assisting law enforcement officials by ensuring abuse accountability, enhancing victim safety, and promoting community awareness, and whereas the domestic violence program of Catholic Charities, which provides services to victims of domestic violence through counseling, court advocacy, shelters, and support groups that seek to preserve and enhance personal integrity and quality of life. Now therefore be resolved that I and the Legislative Chairman, Tom Quackebush, hereby proclaim October 2014 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Montgomery County and call upon all citizens to join with the Montgomery County Task Force Against Domestic Violence in promoting awareness and safety. And thank you for all the hard work that you do.
Thank you.
Anyone here from the public wishing to address the legislature?
Yes. Mark Hoffman, Town of Mohawk, legislator, District 2. I'm also the chairman of the Town of Mohawk Planning Board, that's why I'm here tonight. I recently attended an informational meeting that Fulton County Planning Department had on the study into the FAB connector bypass. And while I'm here tonight, since the last board failed to do anything, participate county-wise in the study, and since Fulton County's taken it over, I have constituents in the Town of Mohawk, as have before when they, when we had the public here, when we were talking about last August, concerned with the process. I know it's just a preliminary round, there's nothing written in stone even where the proposal is going to be, but I think Montgomery County, since it all lies in the Town of Mohawk and legislator, what's this, District 4, that hopefully, we could contact Fulton County, whether it's Planning Board, probably as a star, and see if we can be included somehow as a liaison with the process, because everything coming up through, we're going to go through part of Town of Mohawk and all the sites. There's going to be another meeting, I believe, in December, where they're going to designate a few sites, possibly, and what it's going to cost. Now, this is preliminary thing, nothing written in stone, but the people are concerned with the property, property values, the highway running through their area. After going to the meeting, I really don't see what Fulton County is gaining from this. They're seeming to be pushing the issue, but it'd be nice if Montgomery County had some sort of say, or at least be there as a representative, since these highways are going to run through the Town of Mohawk in Montgomery County. So I, maybe the board or legislator could contact someone in Fulton County in the future, or at least be at the next meeting to see where it transpires. It's one of the things that the town supervised, there are members of the planning board concerned with. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else from the public? All right, hearing none, we will, well, actually, we won't pose a public comment just yet. I don't want to forget this, but as most of you are well aware, Legislator Kuchus has given us his resignation effective 11:59 PM tonight. Am I right, tonight? I just wanted to say thank you to Alex personally, and I think I speak for many on the board, and if anybody wants to address after, they certainly can. Alex, I think, has done a phenomenal job while he hasn't, isn't going to be with us long, this first year of trying to get our new form of government off the ground and running smoothly. Couldn't happen without, you know, nine people working together, and Alex, you've played an integral part of that. It's been fun also serving on that committee that we all serve on, where we Tuesday, where we audit the bills, because he's a wealth of knowledge, and I think he's proved that to us here. So I just want to, you know, wish you personally the very best with success, and just thank you from myself, board, for everything, and I hope this doesn't exceed the contribution limits that our efforts law has.
We need to have it.
It's a gift card for our opportunities, I think, right?
Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure working with all of you. I guess I had better sleep, but one morning back to work.
Okay. All right. Now we'll end our public comment, privilege of the floor. We have no minutes to approve, they're not ready yet, right? So we can move on. Approval of the budgetary transfers. Need a motion and a second?
I'll move.
Ryan, second. Barb, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain. That carries unfinished business. No unfinished business. New business. Resolutions. Resolution 192. Resolution authorizing county executive to sign renewal agreement. Cummins Northeast Plan Maintenance for Generator. Public Health. Sponsors were, we were Diamond. Discussion on 192. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain. That carries. Resolution 193 is a resolution amending 2014 operating budget, New York State DOH, 2013, 2014 Local Health Department Performance Incentive Initiative. Sponsors Diamond, Whites. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain. That carries. Resolution 194 is a resolution amending the 2014 contract, Ventec Incorporated. Sponsors Diamond, Wheeler. Discussion on 194. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain. That carries. Resolution 195 is a resolution establishing position and amending the 2014 budget on data processing. Sponsors Whites, Wheeler. Discussion on 195. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain. That carries. Stop me if we need an amendment anywhere. I don't have the. 196. Resolution authorizing county executive to sign court cleaning agreement, unified court system. Wheeler and Isabelle were the sponsors. Discussion on 196. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain. That carries. Resolution 197 is a resolution authorizing the county executive to sign a five-year security contract, unified court system. Wheeler, Kuchus were the sponsors. Discussion on 197. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain. That carries. Resolution approving abstract of audited claims. Sponsors Wheeler, Whites. On 198, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain. That carries. On Resolution 199, it's a resolution appointing a member to the auditing committee, Office of the Legislature. Wheeler, Whites were the sponsors. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain. That carries. Resolution 200 is a resolution adopting non-bargaining personnel policy. Beaneak, Wheeler were the sponsors. I would motion to table this resolution.
On second pick.
We're not ready yet, that's why. Yes, second. Motion to table. No discussion on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstaining. So 200 is tabled and will come back up at our next regular meeting.
Right.
Correct?
Yes, it will.
Not special.
You're certainly free to discuss.
Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry. It's going to come up at our special meeting, which would be Monday.
The seventh.
Tuesday.
Seventh.
Seventh. All right. And 201 is a resolution adopting introductory local law of 2014, a local law adopting Montgomery County Code of Ethics. Kelly and Whites were the sponsors. Discussion.
Chair.
All right, everybody on this end. We'll start over here. Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to amend Section 202B with proposed language as sent to the legislature by the county attorney.
I'll second that.
I think it would be, you have it?
I do.
Could you read it? Just so everyone in the public knows where it is.
Sure. Sure. This is, this would replace the language in proposed Section 202B, and it has to do with vacancies. If the county executive fails to make an appointment on notice to the clerk of the county legislature to fill a vacancy on the board, this is the Ethics Board, within 60 days after such vacancy occurs, the county legislature shall proceed to fill such vacancy by majority vote of its own number. If the county legislature rejects an appointment of the county executive to fill a vacancy on the board, the county executive shall have an additional 60 days after such rejection to make another appointment on notice to the clerk of the county legislature. If the county legislature fails to act on an appointment of the county executive within 60 days of submission of such appointment to the clerk of the county legislature, the appointment shall be deemed to have been confirmed. Whenever a vacancy occurs by expiration of a term, a member may continue his or her office until the vacancy is filled. No member shall serve more than two full consecutive terms except as set forth herein.
Discussion on the amendment. Any discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, all those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Against, abstain. The amendment carries. Now on a resolution as amended, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain. That carries. Moving on to 202. Now, we don't have sponsors here, so we don't.
You would need to be careful.
Okay. Just so you.
The chairman approved, so they're on the agenda.
Right. Resolution adopting introductory local law of 2014, a local law establishing salary schedule of various county elected officials, which ties in with 200, which we just tabled. So while it's on here, chairman approved, I would, we'd like to, well, we can't table it if we don't have a sponsor in a second, but we want it to come up the same time.
You can either get a sponsor in second, not table it.
I'll second.
Barb, a second, and I'll make a motion to, before we do that, does anybody have any questions? I want to just.
Yeah, when this comes back, we're going to actually have the salaries attached to the resolution.
Yes. And that's part of why we're not ready for it yet. We put it on because we thought we would be, so, you know, after speaking with everyone that was involved with it, it's just better to, but we want it to come up the same time as the other ones. We want it to come to the special meeting for Tuesday night. All right? So I'll make, does anybody else want to speak before I make a motion to table? Okay, I'll make a motion to table.
Second.
Barb, second. All those in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Against, abstaining. That is tabled and will come up on Tuesday night. Resolution 203 is a resolution establishing position and authorizing the county executive to sign crimes against revenue program grant. Come on, chairman approved, looking for a sponsor in a second.
Aye.
Barb, or Terry and Barb. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain. That carries. 204. Resolution authorizing professional auditing services. It comes, chairman approved. Martin, you wanted to sponsor?
Sure.
Second. Barb. Discussion on 204.
I just wanted to gain a little understanding as to how this firm was selected. We had a conversation, we didn't come to, we didn't arrive at a conclusion, but I know they were the second highest of bidders.
Talking with somebody who's been doing consulting with the county for the past numerous years, he recommended that we, while he had issues with two of the people, two of the firms that have done service in the past, he felt that we could ask for a favor to try a new one, and he recommended them very highly.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure the rest of the legislature was aware that this was not below us.
And all the information for the RFPs and the bids are electronically available on our portal. And we all received an email informing us of that, is that right?
Right. Okay. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain?
No.
Against? One against? Alex. Okay. All right. 205. Resolution amending the 2014 operating budget roof repair. Comes on, chairman approved. We spoke about it at the last meeting, needs a sponsor. Ryan sponsors, and Martin, second. Discussion. I guess the only thing I would say is, we talked about it at the committee meeting. Paul's got a little bit more input for us at this meeting, so if we could, you know, give the floor to Paul for a minute and.
Yeah, based on the support shown for the project two weeks ago, the committee meeting, prepared specifications for the roof replacement. We had a site visit with interested contractors last Friday, it was advertised in the county papers, and we got a bid opening this morning. We received three bids, ranging from a low of $83,921 to a high of $105,205. Based on these bid numbers, and some money for some construction inspection, if you wish to proceed with the project, the resolution in front of you would need to be revised from, amended from $75,000 to $86,000.
Okay. Anything for Paul? All right, I think you just heard Paul say, if you'd like to amend the resolution, you'd like to amend, Ryan?
I'll second.
And Roy will second to amend that resolution to insert $86,000. Discussion on the, we just amended that, Doug, from $79,000 to $86,000. Discussion on the amendment of, to $86,000. Hearing none, all those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Oh, go ahead. What did I miss?
No, it was just a little bit of detail, is this on the, for the $86,000, is there a distance for the door? Is there any repairs? Is there a guarantee? What information can you, comes with that?
Yeah, there is a guarantee that comes with the materials that are used on the.
I don't believe on the amendment that we're going to vote on, but I do believe on the resolution, we'll need a two-thirds vote because it's coming from the fund balance, but I don't believe we need it on the amendment, right?
That's true.
Okay. So on the amendment, to move the number to $86,000, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain. That carries. Now, on the resolution as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain. Has its two-thirds, so that passes. Resolution 206 is a resolution awarding bid and amending the 2014 operating budget, Sanitary Sewer District Number 1. Chairman approved, again. I'll sponsor. Martin or Roy?
Second.
Second.
Roy.
Roy. Discussion.
Can we give a background on what happened here? Well, you know, it's fairly clear, but.
Yeah. This is the resolution for the awarding of bid for the inverted siphon.
Is this replacement, or is this repair?
This was flood-related.
Right.
Damaged and are replacing, I believe it's the whole shooting match.
So it's completely non-functional now?
It's, yeah, I mean, it's, and there's a whole.
It was patched after 2006.
Patched after the six flood, but then the next round just devastated it and.
Okay.
Sean?
Just, in the, once an amendment, it should be G599 and not G511.
A typo, or is that an amendment?
I believe it could be typo. Paul's is okay with that?
As long as you're talking typos, and that is one, if I may, I would suggest that the word sewer be deleted three times in the resolution, the proper name of the entity is Montgomery County Sanitary District, without the word sewer.
Okay.
I'm just writing Cheryl a note to that effect, since you brought up typos.
All right. Any other questions on the resolution as amended? Was that amended?
No.
No, not amended.
Typos.
On the resolution. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain. That carries. 207. Resolution authorizing county executive to sign New York State Indigent Legal Services Upstate Quality Improvement Grant Contract. Comes on, chairman approved. Sponsor in a second. Barb?
I'll second.
Ryan? Discussion.
Martin.
Martin?
After talking with the executive, this is not going to affect the base salary of these people, right, employees?
I don't believe so.
For reference, if one of the grants expires, I don't want the county to be liable to continue at that same rate as a base salary in longevity.
Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain. That carries. Resolution 208 is a resolution authorizing Fulton Montgomery Community College to purchase certain computer equipment as part of technology upgrades, Phase 1, 2014 capital plan, Office of the Legislature. Comes, chairman approved, look for a sponsor in a second. Sponsor? Second. Ryan, discussion?
Our share, our share of this is $200,000. We're authorizing a list of expenditures here that exceed $200,000.
Sean, are you on that?
Montgomery County is responsible for one quarter of the total costs of the project. The total cost of this project is estimated to be $800,000. The breakdown is the state pays 50%, Montgomery County pays 25%, and Fulton County pays 25%. Any capital, any approved capital project at the college level, the sponsoring counties are responsible for, in our case, 25% of the project.
Well, I get the math, but that doesn't go to my question. My question is, why are we authorizing the entire amount when our share is $200,000?
I believe if the resolution is actually approving the project.
Right.
The money has been, the Kelly's contribution has been adopted in the 2014 budget. I believe this resolution, the college means the counties, the counties, and I don't know if there's a, Fulton County would have to pass a similar resolution, in essence, approving the project. I believe that's the.
No, I understand that. I guess it's just I'm reading it too literally. Okay.
Each one of the projects have to come before us.
Right.
And each one needs county.
The counties have to approve the project before they can.
Even though we've authorized the money and we've put it in the budget, we still got to say, okay, green light, it's gone, go ahead. Is that what you're, right? Okay. Anything else?
If I may.
You may.
Speak to that. The purpose of these resolutions really is to, and I've seen them many times over the years, is to satisfy the state requirement that the counties have committed to the project and are willing to pay, even though the money's already budgeted, that the state component of it needs to see that commitment before they can sign off on their funding portion of it for the other 50%.
Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain. That carries. Resolution 209 is a resolution for hiring of a temporary, part-time senior count clerk typist in probation. Comes on, chairman approved. Needs a sponsor?
Sponsor.
Second. Roy and Barb. Discussion.
Just curious, why the temporary?
I'm going to, I'm going to fill the position permanently. I have a person who's transferring to another firm, and the person that retired from this position last December was willing to come back for a couple of months, trying to bring the person.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain. Carries. 210 is a resolution authorizing brokerage services, general liability. Comes on, chairman approved, looking for a sponsor in a second.
I'll sponsor.
Martin, sponsor. Barb, second. Discussion.
I would just like to hear from the committee, like, how their decision was arrived at for a particular lender.
Maybe, I think that's a good idea, but, go ahead, and I know Martin, you were both in.
Sure. The, there was, it took a number of steps to reach this conclusion. The first, as we know, we established the committee, which included Commissioner Claiborne, purchaser Scott Sorrento, myself, and legislator Beaneak and legislator Kelly. We reviewed the RFP responses based on the services they would provide, the costs associated with those services, their municipal experience, and selected six, I believe it was, firms for interviews. We then conducted the first round of interviews, and narrowed it down to two based on the, those, the things I mentioned before, but as well as the, how these firms can meet the needs that we're moving forward. There was a unanimous, there was a unanimous consent amongst the entire committee for the particular firm in this school, Insurance Incorporated, and it was a, they were top proposed, their interview went very well, and we felt they had a good understanding of the needs of Montgomery County moving forward, and we discussed it as a group, and the group felt very comfortable with this and comfortable enough to make a recommendation to the board. So it was a very open process, the legislature and the executive. We took a hard look at a number of firms, and frankly, the top five all have been good candidates, but we narrowed it down and worked as a team, and this was the recommendation the group came to in consensus at the end. It wasn't a, there wasn't a lot of back and forth, it was, it was a pretty clear choice for the committee. If I'm missing a little bit, Mark could add to it?
I have nothing to add. It was a.
It was a, they, you know, it was a good round of interviews, and all three, we unanimous consent was to let go of Cool Insurance and, and for Terry for leaving the room a couple of times as we discussed. Cool.
I'm very pleased with the process. I just wanted to state that, I just wanted to know that there was no dissenting voters that it was unanimous decision, that's all.
Yes, and I took into consideration, one thing that was a priority, that was a priority throughout the whole process, was risk management services. And that was what Paul was certainly interested in, and Paul's opinion on this weighed heavily on my opinions, and I would, Paul, if there's anything you'd like to speak to as far as your support for this particular firm or your feelings on the process? Yeah, no, I think they did an excellent job in their interview, and they addressed all of our concerns as far as risk management goes, extremely well, and I think in the end, that's why it showed a unanimous support from the committee in this firm.
I see.
And what, and what additional did they? This firm stuck out because, initially, because the, as you see in this resolution, it was a annual fee, and we felt that the annual fee was a better mechanism to control costs with a percentage of premium. We felt that there was no incentive to reduce premiums, and so we felt that, very comfortable with the flat fee as a, the mechanism for compensation. And they were the only firm that provided that option.
Just for transparency purposes, Martin had just made a comment that Terry had left the room a couple of times. If I were sitting in the audience, I'd probably wonder what that, what that meant. Terry was on the committee, but involved in the interview process was relative who was part of the process there. So when Alex asked the question of whether or not it was a unanimous, well, you actually did not, from what you said, did not actually vote on that. But just for transparency purposes, if I was sitting in the audience, I would wonder what that meant when I heard it, but I just wanted to disclose that, so, it was.
Once, once again, Matt, this is the only company that, that proposed a flat fee and not a percentage? Thank you.
And as I said in my email, which the public didn't review probably, but I had sent this, a short email out, I really appreciated the, of being part of this for so many years in the process, I appreciated the process and the undertaking that you went through to do it, whether I agree with, you know, who's chosen or who isn't chosen, it was just good, it was refreshing. It was a nice process, so I applaud all of you for it. Barb?
I'm just going to follow up the same thing. I applaud all of you in hearing these assessments afterwards, both from the executive and Paul, the risk management and all of the needs that were assessed and addressed, and thank you, Alex. You were fielded in the meeting. Thank you, I appreciate the process, and I support your decision. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? If not, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Against?
Abstain.
Abstain. One abstention? What do we have? That's it. Other. Is there anything under other?
Nothing under other.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Barb? All those in favor?
Aye.
Seems like I'm forgetting something, but.
Yes.
What did I forget?
About me.
Oh. Folks, before you leave, we have a special meeting Monday. The special meeting Monday is to appoint, to fill the vacancy of Alex, and also those, no, the next night is the two resolutions that we talked about that were tabled.
Plus budget amendments.
Plus any budget amendments that we have. All right? So Monday, Tuesday.